If, yes, if everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Excellent, thank you. Thank you for those of us who, for those of you who were here for the, um, the hearing regarding turf fields and for those of you who have stayed for this meeting, and thank you to those who have come for this meeting. We're going to go right into it with the approval of the board minutes from the February 5th, 2020 meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve Dr. Eckers' second? Ms. Napolitano, any discussion of those minutes? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. The next items on our agenda are all for our information that were provided to us previously. We have the budget appropriations report for the general fund for January, the budget transfers over 5,000 for January, the revenue status and cash receipts, school lunch for January, and the warrants for January 2020. Were there any questions in regards to those items?
No.
And would someone like to make a motion to approve the salary changes? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Luce, thank you. I couldn't see. Any discussion of the salary changes? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent, thank you. And would someone like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report for January Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Luce, any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Wow, just whizzed right through. The next is communications and announcements. Are there any board member announcements? Ms. Baruch?
I just wanted to say thank you to Bowling Green for having us in to read yesterday. It was tremendous pleasure. I always enjoy, leave Bowling Green every time with a huge smile on my face, and we're looking forward to being at McVeigh tomorrow and the other schools in the coming weeks. But I also wanted to put out there, I don't know if you saw, that the PTA Council had an access program on February 25th or 26th, I can't remember the exact date, and we had excellent attendance. And I want to thank the access committee. I sit on that committee, and it is such a wonderful group of people who work really hard. And we are going to be having another mental health first aid workshop on March 21st, and the link has been emailed out to everybody. Is there any, are there any spots left?
It's completely sold out. There are two peo-, but there are two people on waitlist, but don't let that stop you because people, uh, it's an all-day event on a Saturday and things come up on, in people's lives, and we would love for people to let us know they're dropping out ahead of time so we can get people off the waitlist, um, before, so, but there's two people on the waitlist right now.
Okay, so if you'd like to join the waitlist, please go ahead and do so, and I'm sorry that was all over the place, but I wanted to make sure I didn't forget about everything.
Thank you. I heard there's tickets available on StubHub, so that's, it's gonna be great. Dr. Luce?
Couple of things. Number one, I just wanted to thank East Meadow High School. They ran a fantastic battle of the classes. For anybody who was there, it was amazing. They did a great job, and particularly thanks to Mrs. Guerrero, who led those kids like nobody's business. She did a really great job, and all of the staff that, that worked the event. I also wanted to thank Boy Scout Troop 2830. They actually had me in to interview me for a badge on public service, and they really did a fantastic job at researching their questions, and they really planned out what they wanted to know and what they wanted to ask, and they really impressed me. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Luce. Are there any other board member announcements? Ms. Benowitz?
Hi, um, I just wanted to remind everybody that Clark is having the Addams Family this weekend, and from the reviews from the sixth grade, it's Stella. Okay, um, so please, if you can, if you're looking for something to do, Friday night at seven, Saturday at seven, it's $10, it's nominal, it goes back to the kids, and it's really, they've worked so hard, these high school kids, and it's just, it's really great. So if you're available, that would be great. And just to piggyback on what Elisa said, I attended that access workshop. It was amazing. It really was, and I, I have to tell you, kudos to Dr. Casamento and Denise Miklis and all of your, um, everyone on access, Elisa, everyone, because all of the workshops have been just really wonderful, and I as a community member really appreciate it because I've gotten something out of everyone, and it, they're great, so thank you. And, and try to attend. Bee was there, oh, she was there, so, it really is, it's a great event, so, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I will now turn it over to Dr. Card for the superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Over the past several weeks, we have been focused on developments related to COVID-19, also known as the coronavirus. The Board and I, as well as our entire administrative team and teachers, believe that the safety of our students and staff are our highest priority. While the threat from COVID-19 novel coronavirus remains low for New Yorkers and the American public, I'd like to share some of the steps we have taken and will take to address the situation. Ongoing activities include the central administrative team has remained in close contact with the district's physician, Dr. Zazo, and the Nassau County Health Commissioner, Dr. Eisenstein, to monitor developments. All students and staff are urged to practice common sense, personal protective measures which can help slow the spread of this or any other respiratory virus, including seasonal influenza. Activities as of today, at the recommendation of the New York State Department of Health and U.S. State Department, we have suspended all travel abroad, abroad. Building principals have been asked to review and share with their faculty the newsletter and pamphlet, Get Your School Ready for Pandemic Flu, issued in April 2017 by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and CDC. And everyday preventative actions that we should all be taking, taking, included, include stay at home when you're sick, cover your coughs and sneezes with a tissue, wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, use at least a 60% alcohol-based hand sanitizer if soap and water are not available, and clean frequently touched surfaces and objects. Moving on, on February 7th, the East Meadow School District hosted the annual county council of school superintendents financial forum. The forum was attended by central administration, Ms. Dobies, and two members of the MTA executive board. Of particular interest was changes to the New York State aid formula proposed by the governor that the NCCSS and other advocacy associations, including NISBA, which is the New York State School Board Association, are opposing. Proposals opposed by NCCSS include consolidation of expense-based aids, changes to building aid, transportation aid, and funding for residential special education placements, and halting the growth in district state support of charter schools. The forum was very informative and provided guidance so that we may advocate, advocate with our elected representatives to ensure Long Island students receive their fair share of funding. These meetings are timely in that we're currently in the process of putting together a spending plan that ensures we continue to deliver a high-quality educational program for all of our children while at the same time keeping the fina-, the fiscal constraints of our taxpayers in mind. Tonight, Dr. Pizzo will provide an overview of our spending plan focusing in on benefits, debt service, fund transfers, and capital expenditures. As a reminder, our next meeting is next Wednesday, March 11th, where there will be a budget presentation on staffing and instruction for the 2020, 2021 school year. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Card. The next section of our agenda is the public commentary section. This is for items that are relating to the agenda tonight. If you would like to speak to the board, if you could please fill out a blue card, as we have a few of them already. Is there anyone here for the public commentary section for the first commentary section? There will be a second one, which will be on items that are or are not on the agenda and open to all. Okay, thank you. So we look forward to the blue cards that we have and possibly more during the second commentary section. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Card.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Dunn to the podium to introduce a, or to recognize a very special student and his teacher.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Card, central administration, and community members. Tonight I stand here in honor of two very wonderful people. One, an alumnus graduate of McVeigh School, and one who's in our fourth grade. So Ms. Safran, our former art teacher, was very active in getting our children involved in as many opportunities as possible, and Devon took advantage of one of those opportunities. Devon entered a contest for the Shanti Fund, and his artwork here is now featured, believe it or not, in the month of March for this year, perfectly for this board meeting, in the month of March. So he won for the third graders, all third graders on Long Island. The Shanti Fund is a, an organization dedicated to peace. They were established in 1995, and for more than 15 years, their volunteers have worked with local schools to inculcate values of peace and nonviolence as practiced and promoted by world peace leaders such as Mahatma Gandhi, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and Mother Teresa. So Devon created that artwork, and I'd like to read to you what he depicted. Now I'll show it to you one more time. Hold it up. He says, now this, his rendition of this image that you see plus what he's written will appear in the program at a breakfast to honor the other recipients on April 1st, and he also received a $301 prize. Go Devon. He said, "In my artwork, the different people represent the different countries, races, and genders, because it doesn't matter if you're black or white, we can come together and unite. The plants represent our love. It keeps on growing for each other. I also included them holding hands because it resembles the strong bond that can't be broken. I put doves in the trees because doves represent peace." If you don't know that already, now you do. The quote that I put in, "Peace is the world's BFF," is true. You can't argue with that. "I think the sun setting is gorgeous, don't you? That's why I put it in my artwork, since it's tranquil and calming. This is about peace." Now to the main part of my artwork, the queen. She resembles how we will turn out if we all work together and care for and love each other. Think about it. If you do all the things I just said, we can have a good future and make this world a peaceful, better place." So those are all his words, and again, his artwork is going to be forever featured in the Shanti Fund. I should also just mention as part of this that both of these people, Ms. Safran and Devon, are potentially world famous. Devon in the making, Ms. Safran now. Ms. Safran, as an artist, has been featured all over the world. One of her symposiums was on climate change in Seoul, Korea. She is currently being featured in the connection of art and science at Cornell Medical University in the City. She was also featured in the Women Forward Art Exhibition recently. She is, again, a very talented artist who has developed a patent on her art, which is how to oxidize copper into something other than green pitted metal. And it's absolutely gorgeous. You can check her out at safran.com. And Devon is a very accomplished dancer. In fact, he is a professional dancer. He is one of the dancers for the Long Island Nets, and he had to request the night off to be here tonight. He actually had to get a personal day from his dance team to be here tonight. So without further ado, I'd like to have Ms. Safran and Devon come up and be honored. So this is presented to you by the East Meadow Board of Education. We are so proud of you, and we look forward to you being honored at that breakfast at the Stonebridge Country Club in Hop Dog. Congratulations, Devon.
Congratulations. Great job. That is awesome. Thank you so much.
Wait, Devon, come back. Thank you. You got it. Got it. One more, one more, one more. May I say that, sir? Great job. Thank you. Thank you.
If you sneak out, we won't tell anyone. Thank you so much for coming out. Have a great night. All right. Oh, yeah? Enjoy. Thank you. Bye, Devon.
Congratulations.
And at this time, Dr. Casamento will be presenting to the board the findings, oh, our photographer, backup photographer, will be presenting to the board on the findings of a recent review of our special education program.
I have no idea what that subtitles thing is. Just, just ignore it. So as you are aware, we asked to have a, an audit done of our special education program, and that audit began, informally, excuse me, in September, and it concluded somewhere around the beginning of December. And so tonight, I'm going to present to you the findings from that special education audit. So the group that did it is a group called CASA. They're up in the Capital Region, I mean, around the Albany area, and they do a lot of different things. We've used them, and I know we're here on Long Island, and Long Island's an amazing place, but there are other amazing places in the state as well, and the CAP region tends to have a lot of, they're, they're close to Albany, so they are at the forefront of a lot of an education initiatives. So this organization actually does professional development primarily for the Capital Region, but we've been able to use them through Nassau BOCs. And we brought people in for professional development for our administrators, and then we also use them for this so far. And the two people who were in the district were Anthony and Colleen, both really experienced retired educators, both special education adminis-, uh, former special education administrators who have done this work throughout primary, uh, actually the whole state. And so their, their knowledge is immense and just the kindest people. So what were they asked to do? As you can see, there's quite a few things they were asked to do. So they were asked to look at the special education program and assess and analyze what we have and in terms of the CSE. They were asked to review and analyze the data of how our students are performing in the special education program, as well as how we're doing in achieving the goals on the IEPs. They were asked to look at the current CSE structure and how that works. They were asked to review the continuum of services and all of the programs we have available. They were asked to assess and analyze the organizational model of the special education staff, and, as well as the resources and allocation of that staff. They were asked to look at our MTSS, which is multi-tier system of support, and RT, or, and/or RTI, response to intervention, and then review our entry and exit criteria for these services, as well as the development of our IEPs, look at the curriculum of the self-contained classes, and then they were asked to conduct focus group interviews, and we'll talk about that a little bit, and write a written report. So what, how did they do all of this work in that amount of time? So they looked at documents that are widely available online, and, and they also asked Ms. Dobies and myself for a lot of the information ahead of time, and so we sent it to them for them, for them to go through and analyze the, the data that we have. Then they looked at the trend data between our district and the New York State report card. They looked at the special education department report for the last two years, and they looked at the fiscal accountability summary, which is something Jen and Pat look at regularly, and to look at how our expenditures in special education are in line or out of line with the rest of the state and the region. They also looked at student IEPs with no names on them, just to see, were we meeting the services that we've said we were going to? And then they had focus group interviews, and they broke us into, and we, we actually broke them into groups for them to look at. They asked us for these groups. One group was the central office staff. Another group were the principals. Another group were classroom teachers. Another group were classroom teachers. Another group were Ms. Dobies and her staff, both together and alone. And so they were able to have all of these. Then they said, well, let's go in and look at classrooms, and there were two of them, and people were driving them all over the district, and to, in totality, they visited 150 classrooms to do this. And then they went into IEP Direct, which is, which is what houses those IEPs, and to look at the IEPs. And they broke this down into three areas: staffing, programs and services, procedures, teaching and learning, and the fiscal side of things. There were a lot of areas of strength. We know that here in East Meadow. And one of the things that they noted over and over again in the report was that our staff has great connections with students and with families, and that can't be understated. Same thing is true about the working relationship between the individual levels of special education, between our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high school, the communication and the articulation between those levels. They say that our curriculum and instruction is of high quality and rigor for our students, and that we, they say we have sufficient staff, and you can see we have 64 teachers, 23 IAs, and 18 TAs. In addition, they noted the strong community support for our programs, and that we have a wide variety of special education programs. And that one thing that makes Mr. Russo very happy is that most of our co-teach, uh, special education teachers are dual-certified. A lot of districts right now are in a little bit of a panic because the state changed the regulations for those special education teachers, and they don't have dual-certified special education teachers. We do. We only had two that weren't, and they're going and getting it, so we're in good shape. So I did condense everything. The other thing on that slide was that our students, as compared to special education students as a subgroup across the state, are outperforming those students. Now, I don't want you to think, because there's five different slides of recommendations, I don't want you to think that our, that we're doing terrible because there's five different slides of recommendations. I just broke them out. It's not that there, there's more negatives than positives. It's not like that. So, recommendations in terms of staffing. They asked us to review the district organization chart and the central office staff. We've been working on the organizational chart for the alignment of whom is Dobies and that special education department will be reporting to, direct reporting to. The other recommendation is we should design high-quality, ongoing professional development for the special education staff. And that's a tricky thing, because the special education staff sometimes wants, says, they say, "I want special education training," but then they really are, need to have, be in training with the teacher that they're with. So it's that tricky balance that we, we were trying to find. They get professional development, it's just we need to start asking them a little bit more. What do you want? What do you need? They suggest that we hold regularly scheduled secondary special education department meetings for schools. It's hard to, for Ms., uh, for Dr. Kavelos to get out and do this on a regular basis, but we've started working to get a schedule created for this. And then, bless you, develop a short-term plan for integrated co-teach at the elementary level. It doesn't mean we're going to do it tomorrow or the next day, but we, we, they suggested that we begin looking at that, knowing that that was something that the community is asking for. In terms of the programs and services, they suggest that we look at the continuum of services and develop a learner characteristic or guideline. So what type of student goes into a 1211 class? What type of student goes into a co-teach? That doesn't mean that we create this book and we say, "Oh, nope, your kid doesn't make this, so it can't go into that class." No, this is a guideline, and it's just to make, to ensure that we have consistency. Plan for direct consultant teacher services. Consult and vertically align the special classes, K-12, and follow the need to expand the 811 program. We are seeing, and we, and that's not just East Meadow, it's across Long Island, there, the needs and services of students coming into our system are increasing, and so this is something that we need to continue to look at. Procedures. Two handbooks that they recommend is a special education handbook and a paraprofessional handbook, and that is something that Ms. Dobies is going to work on through a committee that she's going to be forming. Develop a process and procedure for which group monitors are recommended. It's a good use of our monitors because they can then service more than one student if the needs are the same. Enhance and recreate the special education website. That's something that Ms. Dobies is currently in the process of doing. Develop entry and exit criteria for speech OTPT and counseling services. Professional development and procedures for identifying students with 504s. 504s are not a special education service, however, how we implement a 504 and how we recommend 504 is something that we're looking at, possibly moving to the building level, but we got to make sure that we have consistency. This is a large district, nine buildings. We want to make sure we have consistency before we go and uproot everything that we currently have in place. And then create a district-wide student support advisory team, and that's that committee I was talking about. Teaching and learning. A lot of this is going to fall under my area, and it's something that we're currently doing. We have a district RTI committee with some really dedicated professionals, and we've begun this work, and I assure you that you're going to have an RTI plan somewhere in, in the next year that will look very different from the RTI, RTI plan that you have approved each of the previous three years. So we're in the process of updating that, and then at the same time while we're doing that, we're going to be looking at what do the RTI meetings look like in the classroom for moving students between tiers or, or to the CSE. And that would possibly mean having weekly RTI meetings, but again, that's very infant stages. We haven't gotten there yet. One of the things that is done at the buildings, but we don't have a written plan for, is behavior. We look at ELA, we look at math, but behaviorally, we don't have the written plan, so that's another piece that's being done. Look at what we do for kindergarten interventions. Currently, we don't have a formal process for kindergarten. And then again, you'll see professional development for both the general education and the special education teachers. And provide special education to teach, uh, special education teachers the tools and PD to progress monitor. Progress monitor meaning, we do universal screeners here. We have NWEA, we have reflectives, but those are universal screens. Those are given about three times a year. How do we measure if we're getting, if we're making progress towards that next universal screener? That's something we have not been so great at and something we're looking at implementing. The fiscal ones are look at the programs as a district versus building level. Review the purpose and process for how we use monitors. Periodic report on students in and out of districts and their associated costs, and that is done with pretty regular frequency between Dr. Pizzo and Ms. Dobies. Examine our staffing patterns and continue developing and working with the district's strategic plan, which is another committee that Dr. Card chairs. And so how does special education, how does that align to our priorities in the strategic plan? And, and some of you in the audience are on the strategic planning committee, and you know that we talked about special, special education from the survey that was given. And that's it in a nutshell. Questions?
I have a quick question. As a parent of a child who benefited from early intervention, he got it in first grade, just curious, what, what are you seeing in terms of needs for the kindergartners?
So what we're hearing from the staff at the kindergarten level is that there seems to be this need, and, and sometimes we got to be careful here, right? Because what does it mean, and Dr. Card will talk about this, about what does it mean to be ready for school, and what does the to be ready for school and what does the classroom teacher do? So, this is an area we're looking at, but it would primarily be in the literacy area, right? That's what we'd be talking about. Because we know that early identification stops movement into a CSE.
I think one of the benefits of doing an audit is to begin to probe that question, what should students know and be able to do at each grade level? And one of the reasons why an RTI model is important is because there's a culture that has emerged that says, when a kid comes in a kindergarten, they should know their alphabet. They should know how to count. They should know sight words. But then, the question begs to be answered, so who should have taught them that? And so, while, yeah, that could be a good expectation, if a kid does not come in with those things intact, are they disabled? Or have they just not been taught? And so, the question then should be, what is the kid's ability to learn? And if they have the ability to learn, well, then, we teach them the letters of the alphabet and we progress monitor along the way. That's the purpose behind an RTI model. That's why you have a universal screener in place. So then, what happens for a kid in kindergarten who by January is having difficulty with the letters of the alphabet, their numbers? Well, then, we need to put in place an intervention. And that's hopefully where an RTI program will take us. And I think that's one of the things that the teachers are asking for. I think one of the things that the audit pointed out was clarity of expectations across the system. Not a variation of expectations from building to building. Correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm couching that in the wrong way. So, I think the audit revealed that we have superb programs, wonderful faculty and staff doing good things for kids. However, as I argue, great happens here, but we can always get better. And that was the purpose behind an audit. Because we want to make sure that we do not become okay with what we're currently doing. And one of my concerns, and based on my experiences, that as a district is transitioning, especially in terms of demographics, we continue to do what we've always done because we've always gotten this type of result. But as our demographics change and as our students' needs and desires change, we have to adapt to that and adjust. And so, an audit allows us to take a look at ourselves, mirror, and say, "This looks really good, but I see some room for improvement." And so, I think over the next several months, one of the things that we'll be doing is working on an action plan to put some of these recommendations in place so that we can continue to move our district forward.
I would also just like to add, being that this is what I do for a living, for those of you who don't know, I am a child and school psychologist and this is literally what I live. Kudos to the administration for seeking this out, for seeking this feedback, and for starting to focus more on the early intervention aspect because overwhelmingly, if you don't know, the research points toward early intervention being the primary factor of long-term success. And from the special ed department, it actually winds up costing you less, if we're looking at the budgetary aspects of special education, if you provide early intervention services early on before the problem snowballs into a larger one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Casamet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I believe the next presentation is going to be Dr. Pizzo for the next portion of our budget presentation on employee benefits, debt service, fund transfers, and capital. Dr. Pizzo puts the "fun" in "fund transfers."
Oh, it's right there.
We have everything ready to go here. I do have my pointer to point out some of the issues as we go through, as I know it can be difficult for everyone to see. What we're covering today is the 9,000 series, and as you can see, benefits, debt services, fund transfers, and capital expenditures. And this is a substantial component. I want to touch on the tax levy limit, some updates here. We did talk about this briefly. We had said we were still working and that's reflected in this slide. We're looking at, at this point, for our 50% plus one, if we were to stay, which is always our intention, to stay within the levy limit, we would be at $142,933,804. That is different than the last number as some factors have changed. That now represents a 2.5% increase over last year's levy. Okay, what were some of the changes? We did have some changes in regards to how the cap is calculated. We did get some guidance in regard to the calculation with the BOSI's capital piece that was still outstanding the last time. And we also did do a, we did adjust what we applied in regard to our reserve for bonded debt. There's $886,000 of reserve for bonded debt, which has been captured here. We did, I see here, submitted to the state comptroller on March 1st. Okay, that was, we did that on Friday, so that's already, includes carryover, doesn't work like it sounds. So, that's not usually going to be a factor. If we were to increase more by, more than this number, 3.482,449, that's the year-to-year, that is when you get into the point where you need to achieve a supermajority, which again, is not our intention. We just provide it for informational purposes. Okay, 9,000 series, just want to cover some of the areas here. We're talking about benefits, so a major, major component of benefits, of course, is our employer contributions for ERS, TRS. That's the employees' retirement system, teachers' retirement system, that cover our employees, our social security contribution, workers' comp, life insurance, unemployment insurance, all those different factors that go into our employee benefits. We also do capture here, debt service and inter-fund transfers. What's that? That's capital, basically, and some other items where we will have impacts. So, here's the grand number. If you take all of these different factors and put them together, you could see what we did our actual in 1819, which I tend to rely on a lot more. Because while we have a freeze on the budget, there are still things that can impact us going forward. So, this is our best estimate as to where we're going to be. And as you see, that then follows through to here. So, what we're looking for in the, here's what we're thinking we're going to end up with and what we're looking to go forward with. And you see, there's a change there, $3.3 million, and that is a major change. Okay, now, keep in mind, there's a lot of different factors going in here and we have to build in contingencies. This is not an area where you want to cut it too close. So, just follow, we'll follow through area by area and we can get a better understanding of that. Okay, here's some history on ERS. We go back all the way to 2001, 2002. This gets back to the good old days when some changes were made to Tier Four and the contributions. As you see now, we're on a much higher level. We're looking at 14.6. You'll notice that's the same as last year. We are still, that's the guidance still, is that it's going to be at that same range. So, it is stable from year to year. But we did mention the last time, and it's still true, each year, the employees, they will move up on the salary scale, so you're paying 14.6% of a bigger number. We're not looking, you know, we're obviously very careful with staffing as we discuss next week, but you still do have people going up in salary. And you can't go through one of my presentations without some kind of graph. So, here is the graph that I'm very proud to share. And as you could see, not as bad as it can be, but you know, still, it's up at a pretty high level. You will see on some of the cap calculations whether there is an exclusion for the pensions. You might, when we go over the cap at later meetings, because there wasn't a drastic increase, there isn't an exclusion. So, I just figured I'd touch on that while we're on this slide. Okay, so here it is. Here's the change just for this category, just for ERS, looking actual, estimated, and where we are. So, we are figuring in a moderate change and that is to capture the increase as people move up on the salary scale. That is the 1.3%. You can see, it's a nominal change of 30,000. We do have a little bit of an area in there, so we want to capture some savings to keep it close, but that's about as close as I would recommend keeping it. Okay, teachers' retirement system. We talked about this in the last presentation. We had a range, I think it was 9.25 to 10.25. And we were hoping it would come in lower. We had, just after the last presentation was done, we were given some information that it would be lower, but we wanted to really look at all of our options for what we do with this presentation. This year, the rate is set at 9.53, so on the lower end of what it could have been. So, that's some good news. But again, as you see the historic, back 6970, way back we go on this one. I was able to get information going very far back for this. As you see, we do have a slight increase. And again, also salaries going up, so the increase is more than just paying the employer contribution rate on salaries. It's a percentage on a bigger number, so a little bit of a double hit there. Okay, does everybody see that down there? So, that's where it follows through to. Okay, and here's another chart. I have a chart. And you see, it's been pretty level. I've got to say that there's been, it seems to be an effort to try to keep it level so it's not dealing with the fluctuations. I know back, I was around back during this time and how much of a difficulty that imposed on the budget when you had those steep increases going year to year. So, at least we're dealing with a reasonable number, you know, and it's consistent from year to year. And here's the dollar figures we do have on this one. We did want to have a little bit of room in here. So, you see, we did figure in a little bit of a higher amount. But again, we have to have areas in the budget that have, you know, as part of effective planning that we don't cut ourselves too close. But you know, obviously, we're looking at every nickel to try to get it as close as we can. This is not the final product, but this is where we are and where we're comfortable at this point. And you can see, that's where the change is. This is the dollar change. Okay, social security. Again, you know, we do have a little bit of an increase here. Not a little bit. We do have an increase of a little bit of substance here. But again, you know, these are areas, when you're talking about benefits, that we want to make sure that we have contingencies. Workers' compensation, looking at the numbers, we felt that we could keep this flat. So, where we can, we try to do that. We did feel like, looking at the actual, we do think, you know, I put 550 as the estimate. We do think we'll be a little bit below that, so we thought that we could carry forward that 550. Okay, life insurance. We do have a bit of a change here, but it's on a smaller number, so it does look, oops, so it does look a little bit more drastic because of it being, the increase being on a smaller number. And again, anything we're doing in regards to these policies, hopefully, we do evaluations as to trying to get the best rate for the district on these policies. It is something that we're actively reviewing, so we're not opposed to saving money and coming in under these numbers. All right, but I think that we need to be cautious and recoup those savings next year. Just think it would be more prudent to do that way. Okay, unemployment insurance. This, you know, it's based on what you get assessed on. Unemployment insurance, there are different things that we would be assessed for that you may not readily expect. But we are, for obvious reasons, because of the way we, you know, East Meadow is traditionally run, the way we've dealt with employees, this is not something that really is an issue. So, we thought that we had more than adequate funding to keep this flat. Okay, disability insurance. Again, we thought that we could keep this flat. We were running a little bit lower. We did have some room at 375 as opposed to the actual last year. So, we kept it flat. Again, want to be prudent about these reductions in these areas. Okay, dental and health. This is another area that we're doing an evaluation on. When it comes to any one of these employee benefits, we've been meeting with the longtime providers. We've been bringing in new providers. We let the old providers know that new providers are coming in. That happens to get through to them. And so, we are hoping that we are able to get some changes. We are now self-insured on some of these aspects, which means that there are just, that in some areas, dental comes to mind. We have a company that is dealing with the processing, but we're actually funding it. So, we're looking at fully insured options, looking at ranges of commitments. So, this is an ongoing evaluation again, so we want to be cautious here at this point, but hopefully, we could come up with a better deal, whether it's with our current provider or some other provider, and recapture savings next year. But that's not reflected yet, but hopefully, that's an issue we're dealing with going forward. Okay, we're just dealing with, you know, some other benefits. These are some components of various employee contracts. And again, we, just looking at what we have, what we've done traditionally, we wanted to make sure that we had a number, that this was not something that was going to cause any kind of issues. Well, let's just do see that there's a change. It's not a huge change in the scope of what our actual budget is, but because it's a smaller number, it does reflect higher, but I think that's the correct approach here. And as you can see, some of this, we did do some shifting, some reclassing here in 1819, so that's what that note is on the bottom. You see, we put these little notes here. Okay, debt service. This really gets interesting with the debt service. And I was talking about with the debt service, Dr. Card had pointed out, we have one year remaining on the existing debt, which is, you know, $4,25,000, whatever that is roughly what that number is. So, we have currently the band for Phase One, the band for Phase Two, band being a bond anticipation note. That's not the bond. Those are short-term instruments that will get us to when we bond, when we wrap everything together. So, in this current year, we're going to have more, another year of bands, and we have that last year of the debt service from our previous bond. Then going forward, and this is what Dr. Card was also indicating about the long-term plan, we do know that the next budget after this budget, we will have that old debt falling off and you want to have that smoothing effect. And I've got to say, this is something that all of cabinet has worked very difficult, you know, worked on this very difficult problem to project forward. So, we're always looking multiple years because we'll have that debt service drop off. And that debt service is what? It's an exclusion. So, what that means is that is going to impact your cap. So, if you have, if we would have went to a bond, say for instance this year, we would have had a double hit on the bond, we would have had a huge exclusion, which would have meant a huge increase to the levy. And the levy is the money we're asking for you. And I live here, me too, is what we're assessing to our public. So, it would have been a bigger impact than that 2.5. And that's something that I think that above that 2.5, that would be something that would be problematic. But what would be even more problematic is then, when that debt service drops off, then it goes the other way the next year, where we could be in a deficit situation where we would actually, our cap would actually reflect a negative, which technically can happen. We straddled that line a couple of years ago, but that's something that you can't do. So, it doesn't make sense to look at something just within the year. You have to look multiple years down the road. So, that's the reason why you see this change back and forth and figured into this equation is the $886,000 on the reserve for bonded debt, which was applied. I think we picked just the right amount to have the proper smoothing effect that we don't hurt ourselves next year and that we can consistently stay within that same range in regard to the levy. And I see that 886 is right there and that's the note on that. But yeah, this is something that is going to be, is going to be something that we're going to be dealing with next year and I think we have an effective plan to deal with it. Okay, inter-fund transfers, and we're talking about here, talking about capital is an inter-fund transfer. So, that's primarily what this is. There are, it's also a transfer to the federal code. And we do also do capital projects now. The capital projects are just a component of supporting some of these bond projects because when you're doing bond projects, or if you because when you're doing bond projects, or if you're doing the smart bond, which deals with technology, you have infrastructure needs in regards to electrical abatement. So, we have to match up funds to be able to do that. So, this is something that strategically, we're looking at going forward, not to get on that other topic, but as we roll out the bond, we're also making sure that we have funds available to keep the ball rolling, to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to support these great initiatives. Okay, so here's what we're talking about now. Now, this is, okay, today's date here, it's actually really about 3/1, because this tax increase, this levy, our levy increase, that was submitted to the state on Friday. That's the number we were talking about, that 2.5 percent, which is from our cap calculation. Now, this budget increase, that's the expenditures. Those are the money, that's the money that we're actually spending. When you get that budget book, that's the expense budget number, and that's something that is where we are at this point. Obviously, April 1st is when the budget is accepted by the board, and up until that point, it can be modified, and there's always information that we're reviewing right up to that point. But, 2.71, I think we've really kind of honed in on, I think we're getting very close, but that is not etched in stone yet. Okay, now, here's an interesting slide, and it's really, hold on. I hit the wrong, hold on for a minute. I hit the wrong, I hit the wrong presentation. But, anyway, with this slide here, if you look up here, you could see the difference if we just did the, if we just went to the levy. What it really comes down to is 1,62,872. This is the number to look at. This is the number that goes from, is the difference between what we can raise on the levy and what we're actually using with the expense budget here. So, this is really, is really the shortfall that we need to deal with to be able to fund the budget. So, this is something that, when we talk about cuts that need to be made, this is the number. You notice that number was up about 2.5 million the last time? So, we've done a lot of work in regards to, one, the revenue budget came up. We did raise that revenue number, and we also brought the expense number down. That gap in between those two is that 1,62,000. Okay, contingency budget. This is something that we haven't had in East Meadow, I think, since 1974, but we do share some of the information on this, because while we build a lot into this budget, it is a budget that we are really being, really kind of scrutinizing every number on this If we were to go to a contingency budget, some of the requirements would be, and this will be as we do the presentations, we'll detail this out further. One is, there can't be a levy increase, there can't be exclusions. That's right here. Okay, so that's going to require over $1.7 million worth of reductions, which is really drastic. We must remove all of the equipment. Now, this equipment is equipment, everything from moving around, you know, the instruments for our children, and do such a great job with the music programs, is one thing that we're using our vehicles. Vehicles also with the security that police the district. All the maintainers and the groundspeople that maintain our buildings, they're all in equipment, and we do have replacement plans, and that all gets impacted on that. And this also does get into fees. You know, we've talked about that. I know that's something that Dr. Card had mentioned, that there's some work being done with that, but I think that would be, you would have, for building and field use, under a contingency budget, you're really looking at capturing the actual cost. This isn't a moderate fee being assessed as a program has moved forward at our rate, at what we think is acceptable to maintain our partnership with the community. This is something that would be imposed, and the actual cost of what we're providing for these groups that are doing everything from basketball for children to events on our fields, hopefully, very soon, very new, nice fields, but on our fields, and any of our buildings. If you look at what our actual costs were, that we'd have to assess to our groups, it would be very painful for our, for these groups that we've had such long-term partnerships with. Okay, capital expenditures, just some of the areas, just where did we come up with this number? Well, it comes from building leaders we were meeting in the fall, comes from our Director of Facilities, Craig Camerata, does his piece with consultation from Chris Hunt, who's our architect, our project manager, who's working with us in regards to all of these different projects. Our five-year plan, we do a five-year plan where we map out what we're going to do with information provided largely by our architect, with input from myself and Mr. Camerata, and also members of Cabinet. And that's where that comes from. Okay, and let me show you what the projects are. Okay, we're looking at $925,000 total, but these are some of the projects. You'll see the different elementary schools on this page, and you're not looking, this is not, this is not like all bells and whistles. These are projects that are really going to really serve important purposes. Some of the things, there's infrastructural in regards to our heating system, a bathroom, you know, just a redo. It's not a full done, a full job. The parking lot over at Bowling Green is something that we've talked about, which has been needed for many years, dealing with safety issues in regards to some changes with some older doors with locks. You can see some different infrastructure needs in regards to our asphalt, and, you know, replacing a floor that is not, I'm sorry again, which is not in any kind of condition at the library. And also, you might have noticed, some of the areas, we have some of the film is shaded over on, in some of our buildings. So, this is looking at that over at Parkway, where over on the Breeze Way, we have a very, very big problem with that. We did not do the tennis courts over during the, as part of the bond at Woodland, so we're looking at a redo there. That's an actual number that we had from a gentleman from Land Tech who was here earlier. And this is also dealing with some glass issues, and this is interesting. Repaint gymnasium at the, all right. I thought there might be somebody who's interested in that. So, yeah, that made it. Some other site work there, and some other things, and some other important issues in regards to abatements over at East Meadow High School. As you see, we have things throughout the whole district. It's based on needs, but we do look, we do try to look right across the board to try to include issues with everything. If you see a school that gets less, they probably get more in a previous year, or there might be a different funding source. We also do repair projects, which aren't something that we submit line item, but are done in consultation with our principals. So, if you don't see as much in the school that you're coming from, don't worry, it's been addressed in one extent, either in prior years, future years, or through repair projects that we don't have delineated here. Okay, proposition one, our budget. And proposition two, we had a little discussion on that before, to amend the 2017 bond referendum. As was mentioned earlier, that was, that would be the method for how that would be achieved. And this is probably the most important slide. It's so great to have people out here to see the presentation, so please make a note of some of these dates above. We would love to see everyone out here joining us again, and thank you for everyone who's here tonight and was here earlier. And I turn it back over to Dr. Card and the Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Pizzo. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? I know our next meeting is strictly a budget presentation.
No.
You do.
We have a few agenda items.
Oh, never mind.
We'll do personnel.
You should all come.
I snuck it in.
Lot to do.
We'll do.
You should all definitely come and attend. It'll be great. Any questions for Dr. Pizzo? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Sort of staying somewhat on topic, but a very different topic. Next is discussion regarding the resolution for the turf field selection and budget proposition. I'm going to start this by asking if someone would like to make a motion to approve the resolution for turf field selection. Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Eckers. Let's have a discussion. So, we've had two hearings now before this board meeting today and the previous board meeting in regards to listening to the community as to what their wants are, the four different options that Dr. Pizzo and Dr. Card and others helped come up with, one being the original regular black fill, the green fill, the sneaker fill, and finally, the coconut cork fill, difference in costs from regular, original fill to coconut cork fill being $1 million. The community, through polls taken, exit polls taken at those meetings by Pete Stea, who is not here but can get a shout-out, the community seems to be behind the green fill overwhelmingly, which is similar to the original fill, but more able to control temperatures and heat on the fields. The amount of that, the amount needed for that over and above what we have in the current bond is 2,000, something, something, something. I'm going to get the number. 2,582,080, and $80, and the $80 is just for fill. So, what we have provided to us is the resolution that will go to the voters to amend the previous bond voted on in 2017 to add this additional 2.582 million to that. Would anyone else like to make any statements, discussions regarding this? I try. No?
No, just to echo what you said, I don't think it needs to be said, but I don't have any personal opinion on the type of field. I don't have much experience. I tried to avoid the field as much as possible in high school, but the community, as you said, the community seems to be overwhelmingly in favor of this, and the green field seems to be, the green turf fill seems to be the most logical option for us, and therefore, I would agree that, I would agree that we move forward with that. Thank you.
I had a friend who's a trustee over in Seaford reach out to me today, and they did turf three months ago, said they're very, very happy with it. There's been no issues, no complaints. So, I appreciated his feedback, and, again, I think, let's all echo what we've been hearing. We had a significant amount of people come this past meeting and the meeting before. So, yeah.
The other thing I just want the community to be aware of is that the language of the proposition will be sent out prior to, so that everybody has an opportunity to consider and make an informed decision.
Yeah, because this is not something that we, as a board, are able to do alone. This is something that the community must vote on. So, we, by voting on this, if we do pass it, we are now passing this choice over to the community for them to decide whether or not they want to move forward with this. If we do not move forward with the turf fields, we will continue with the plan that was passed two years ago to renovate the fields with natural grass. That being said, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to go to the second reading of the Policy 4,000 on homeschooled students. Would someone like to, since it's a second reading, would someone like to make a motion to approve? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Benowitz, discussion? Mr. Russo? Anything you want to add to this? This is the same, right? We didn't make any changes from the last version?
No, it's this same policy. Briefly, I'll just, you know, share, like, you know, as we indicated at the last work session, this is an existing policy that was reviewed by Ms. Dobie, our Director of Special Education, and we did add into the policy provisions for students who require special education services, and we did remove language from the policy that we thought was overly redundant. So, tonight represents a second reading, and if approved by the board, will become part of the policy manual.
Seven, nothing. Next is another second reading of Policy 4,321.4, the independent educational evaluations. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this? Ms. Baruch, second. Ms. Napolitano, any discussion? This is also a same one as we read last time with no change, correct, Mr. Russo?
Yes, so this is a new policy, and this policy was also recommended by Ms. Dobie's, and essentially, the policy is independent educational evaluations, and it lays out the process for a parent if they should seek an independent educational evaluation for their child. This is the, what we're putting in policy form is what we currently do as a district, but we never did have the policy. So, now, if it is passed by the board this evening, we'll have the policy in place, and again, it will become part of the policy manual.
Thank you, Ms. Russo, and that's something that I know you've been working on, and we, as a district, have been working on, is the things that we do, that we're doing correctly, putting them in writing, and the things that we are either not doing or need to do, putting them in writing as well. So, thank you very much for your efforts on that. And with that, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. Thank you. Moving right along, we're going to go to the Nassau BOCES, thank you, trustees, I'm combining words, Nassau BOCES trustees nominations. This is not necessarily something we're voting on, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Card, on this real quick.
Very good. We have two things that we need to accomplish. Each year in April, as a component district, we must vote on the Nassau budget. In addition to that, we must also vote on the election of trustees for vacant seats. This year, this board has the opportunity to either reaffirm or nominate someone for a seat on the Nassau board, because Debbie Coats, who's currently serving as a trustee, her term expires at the end of June, so we can either nominate, or we can just reaffirm Debbie Coats's nomination. But, we need not do it tonight. We would do it next week by resolution if you guys decided to nominate. If not, we'll simply wait for the vote in April and reaffirm her position. It's up to the board. So, if there will be a nomination, I'll need to know that so that we could draft up a resolution that needs to be sent to BOCES by March 17th.
What is the benefit to her for us to nominate her versus to reaffirm her?
We wouldn't do anything. We would just vote on.
On April, whatever the date is.
No, on April 21st.
Right, okay, thank you.
If it was a nomination, if it was a nomination, it would be nominating someone other than Ms. Coats.
Right, thank you for the call.
So, if we're satisfied with Ms. Coats being BOCES, then I think we're good, unless anyone has anyone who they would rather nominate and discuss, I think we're good with affirming at the next meeting.
Very good. And the second item that I just need to know at this point, so I could inform the district clerk, is who's available to vote on Tuesday, April 21st? We can either do it at 9:00 in the morning, or at 4:00 in the afternoon, 5:00 in the afternoon. It is based on your availability.
Can you say the date again? I'm sorry.
April 21st.
So, we need four people to be available for that?
I should be available.
For which time slot? 9:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon?
Four. Four, and Ms. Benowitz, you? So, I think we have four. If needed, I can, via Skype, I, something, but I think the four, and we'll be able to do that then, so thank you. So, 4:00 on the 21st of April, and we'll meet just in the, or those coming will meet in the.
In my office.
In Dr. Card's office, we're going to say. Perfect.
Okay.
Excellent. Eat his jelly beans.
All done.
Next, we're going to move to the consent agenda items. The first is the curriculum instruction. Someone like to make a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction item, Agenda E1, the CAPSE and CSE approvals? Dr. Luce, second. Dr. Eckers. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. No, no, there was discussion?
I don't feel comfortable voting in this because my own child's.
I don't feel comfortable voting in this because my own child's in this, so I would prefer to abstain.
Okay. So we're going to do 6-0 with one, with, yep, with Ms. Baruch abstaining.
You got that, Joanne?
You need the people? Jody was, was, I was seconded. And then it was a 6-0 with Ms. Baruch abstaining.
Thank you. Next is the board consent agenda for personnel. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the personnel items, F1 through 14 of the agenda items? Ms. Napolitano, second. Ms. Tell, oh, she's there. Ms. Tell, any discussion regarding these items? She's been so quiet over there, other than the sneezing. Any, any question, any discussion? No, all in favor? Seven, nothing. The business agenda items, would someone like to make a motion to approve? Business agenda items, G1 through 6. Ms. Benowitz, second. Dr. Luce. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to approve the custodial overtime report for January 2020? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Benowitz. Any discussion regarding overtime? I would like to add, we thankfully have not had any snow.
All right.
All in favor? Seven, nothing. Next is the second public commentary section. I know it's a little out of order.
Oh.
Yeah, but it's okay. Second public commentary section. I have some blue cards. If there's anyone else who would like to address the board tonight, if you could please fill out a blue card and, and submit that. Anyone who speaks tonight will have three minutes. If I cut you off, it's because your three minutes are up. It's not because I like or dislike anything that you are saying. And with that said, Ms. Mia Collins, please.
Refresh your screen.
It's going to make me do the whole thing over again.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I just want to start off to say this has nothing to do with the coronavirus. Nothing. I understand in 2005, green cleaning methods were introduced into our school district, and all products containing bleach and ammonia were replaced by organic cleaners. For the second time this year, my son has come home with the flu. We need to revisit this and start using bleach, Lysol, other disinfectants to kill these germs and viruses once and for all. I understand that there are fumes, but we've had a very mild winter, so maybe we could open some windows and take care of those fumes. I know that the cleaning every inch of the buildings are, is a huge undertaking, and I know how hard the custodial staff works. But maybe we can focus on highly touch surfaces, like the buttons on the vending machines, the stair rails, things that we don't think about. In 2009, automatic soap dispensers were introduced into our school district. But what good are they if the faucets are dirty, if the door handles are dirty, if just surfaces that are touched all the time are not cleaned properly? So that's all I wanted to say. Just wanted to know if there's another way we can effectively clean. I know organic things do work, but I don't think right now it's working. Thank you.
I, I think, you know, we, we always use that term, green cleaning, back in the time. It's kind of a misnomer. What we use, and I published an article on this, what we use is the correct product to address what the need is. What I mean by that, when you have an issue with the flu or any other, you're going off an approved list of products, which very often aren't green products. We don't overuse disinfectants. We use the, the correct disinfectant. And when you're talking about the high-touch areas, that is something that's being done. And when you're talking about disinfectants, no, they aren't green products. So I, I think that what you're, what you're talking about is, is what's going on. I think there's some misunderstanding, because I think the word green cleaning, I think, kind of has been misinterpreted, that we would never strictly a green cleaning program. Oh, oh, and as for bleach, that's just, that's, that's, that's a product that's, that's banned through New York State. We legally couldn't use it. But while bleach is a product that you can use to kill germs, they are alternative. So we, when you go off an approved list, yes, bleach could work, but we'll use another product that, that, that can work. So bleach in a school setting, yeah, we'd be violating the, the law to doing it. It's a pretty, it would be a pretty blatant violation of the law.
Is there something that can be done to clean, or just concentrate on higher touch surfaces? Just an extra day to do it or something, just to clean it once and for all?
That's what's going on now. I think that, that we do have the, it's called a deep cleaning protocol. We've had it, we've had it for many years. Goes back to when I first, I think actually before I even was here, we had the protocols in place. I updated it years ago. But with this, with this flu season, with the other concerns that are now out there, that has been accelerated. I know our custodial staff is constantly going around doing those high-touch areas. Just keep in mind that we disinfect an area, a person touches it, it's, it's not disinfected anymore. So, so we're aware of that, so we continually do this. But if you have six, a, a child who's sick with the flu, or God forbid, something worse, you do have that human, human-to-human contact that is still not addressed through that, or can be transmitted if they touch the surface after it's been disinfected. So it takes a lot of work still. Kids do still occasionally, you know, catch these viruses. But every, every precaution is taken. I think we have a very strong program.
And I just wanted to say, I'm sorry to hear about your son, and I hope he's feeling better.
Thank you.
I, I think, yes, it's really important that we do that deep cleaning every year during flu season. However, you know, from a lot of the things that I've been hearing, I've attended a presentation by the Nassau Commissioner of Health. I was ju, just up in Albany yesterday, where the Department of Health did a presentation. And while deep cleaning is very important and necessary both in our schools and on the bus, the most important things are that, are those individual protective things that we need to do. And in the school system, of course, it's difficult because you have kids ranging in age from five to 17, 18. As Dr. Pizzo pointed out, we could deep clean, but the minute you deep clean and somebody sneezes, and they didn't cover that sneeze, or cover that cough, that area that you've just sanitized, sanitized is already contaminated. That's one of the reasons why this evening, I, I took the time out to bore everyone to death, and I talked about covering your cough, staying six feet away from people, making sure that you're not touching surfaces, and touching your eyes, your nose, because that's where you're going to take in those germs. I heard what you said tonight, and we're doing what we should be doing. But I think in this heightened moment, in terms of influenza, right, and the flu, if you will, and even the coronavirus, we should be practicing those things. And we as a system, we're going to continue to emphasize that with the kids, hopefully training that. And I hope that parents will also do the same things at home.
Thank you.
But thank you. And I hope he feels better.
Thank you. I just want to let you know, I received that email after I wrote this, so I just want to.
Which email?
Thank you.
Which email?
You said that the coronavirus.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kathy Worthman, please.
Good evening. I've spoken at many of these meetings, pushing mental health awareness. And I want to express my gratitude to Dr. Card, the board, and everybody in the community has really worked to bring awareness. The access programs have been wonderful. The one last week I went to, it was phenomenal. The youth mental health first aid, again, it's really nice to hear that it's been sold out again. And in particular, what really, really, I think was wonderful was to see first-page article and the steps to learning about mental health. Because we can, among ourselves, talk to death about mental health awareness and the access meetings. But realistically, the majority of the community does not come out to these meetings. And the fact that we're bringing this to them, showing that we're prioritizing it, and just letting them know what's going on is really, is, is really, really good. I do have a question, and that is, what information can you share regarding the training that the staff and the teachers have regarding mental health? So are you allowed to share the information, and how can someone get access to it? And the reason why I ask this is because I am a parent of a child that has mental health. And if I was a parent of a child who had allergies or some type of physical health, I would want to know that there's somebody in the school that's trained, you know, to handle this should something happen. So I'd like to know, you know, if trainings are going on, what trainings are going on, and, and how can we as parents or the public get access to this?
I think that, not I think, one of the requirements in New York State is, at the beginning of the year, we're required to do a, do a number of trainings. One of them is mental health, and the next one is about safety. So at our superintendent's conference day, we had a full staff presentation on mindfulness, meditation, et cetera. And then at the building level, the same lady that did the training in, in relationship to Mental Health 101, she has been visiting all the buildings during training with staff. His name escapes me right now. Anthony Zenkis has been to all of our buildings as well, working with staff and doing this, a similar type training that he did with the parents last week. So this is an ongoing effort. And one of the cautions I will throw out there is that, you know, adults in schools are not mental health specialists. And so one of the things that we have also been talking about is redesigning our guidance spaces to make them wellness centers. We're not there yet, but there are models out there, and we're moving in that direction. One of the things that's happening at the Bosse's level is the development of a closer with Winthrop and Northwell, where we will be able to purchase through Bosse's at a reduced cost services through these organizations, so that we can have a psychiatrist that's on board in our district. Is that for me?
That's for you.
My heart is broken.
I was so shocked by what you were saying, and I didn't see the timeline.
That's okay. So we are very much engaged. As a matter of fact, today, Kristi Detour spoke to me about what we're going to do during Mental Health Wellness Month. So we're on top of it.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming to every board meeting and reminding us.
And I do appreciate everything you've done.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms., yes. Ms. Wendy Shea, please.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
I know. I read the card.
Took me a long time to write this. Okay. So thank you, once again, for always willing to hear me. This is a letter that I plan on emailing each and every one of you as soon as I get a moment to sit there and type all your names into the system. So, Dear Dr. Card, President Melnick, Board of Education members, school district administrators, I'd like to take a moment of your time to talk to you about the East Meadow High School marching band and its three wonderful directors, Mr. Steven Engel, Mr. Zach Robison, and Mr. Gregory Sisko. Throughout the school year, these three wonderful teachers worked tirelessly to continue the district's amazing music program. From marching and parades to performing halftime shows at football games, as well as concerts and festivals throughout the school year, they are always exciting to watch. Although this past February topped them all. Our marching band was invited to march in a parade down Main Street, USA, in Walt Disney World. Planning this trip was not an easy undertaking. Over 150 students and staff, as well as us parents who lined the parade route, supporting our children, teachers, and our district, all descended on Orlando. These three teachers were just amazing, not only in planning and executing of the trip, but the way they conducted themselves. The respect that they've earned from their students and vice versa was just wonderful to witness. Throughout the four days, these teachers interacted with their students by going on rides, not only with the students, but with us parents as well, posing for pictures and just having a great time. As a parent of a high school student, you very rarely have an opportunity to see the interactions between teachers and student. But I had a front row seat. This was such a wonderful experience for my 11th grader, who has been waiting for this trip since he was in fourth grade. I have to say, he was not disappointed. So thank you to Mr. Engel, Mr. Robison, and Mr. Sisko for this memorable experience. And you have, and to you, the members of our administration and Board of Education, for continuing to fund experiences like this. Our music program is very precious and important to our children's development as something that we should never be diminished. Thank you. And you all missed the break.
Thank you.
Shit, okay.
Okay. That, that was an excellent way to end public commentary, to say the least. Would anyone, are there any board member announcements or comments that they would like to make?
Just one. This is purely for informational purposes only. Someone in the community messaged me and asked me if I would just alert those of us that live over on the Merrick Avenue side of East Meadow. There is now a red light camera on the corner of Merrick Avenue and Front Street, and I've done my due diligence. If you get a ticket, don't blame me.
Did you know that?
Any, any other board member announcements? With that, we are going to make a motion to go into executive session tonight. We are not going to come out of executive session to make any votes. So while you are welcome to stay, I don't know if there's a need to. And with that being said, would someone like to make a motion to go to executive session to discuss matters relating to collective bargaining? Everyone. Melissa Tell made the motion, second. Ms. Napolitano, no discussion. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Thank you very much. And everyone, have a safe night. Thank you all for coming. Look forward to seeing you next Wednesday.